Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Elaria. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecity.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners page, then click on View Agenda.
Good morning, can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, welcome to Lorraine County Board of Commissioners Meeting, Wednesday, May 9th, 2018. Commissioner Lundey, welcome.
Thank you, our word of inspiration, in the end, people appreciate frankness more than flattery.
And I have the dog this week. Come here, come here, come on, we'll get you on TV, okay? We'll get you home. Come on, look that way. There you go. Our featured dog this week is about a two-year-old male pit bull mix. He's got a great personality, he was found in North Ridgeville, extremely friendly, and he's available for adoption now. We also have fourteen total dogs at the dog kennel, so come down and see us, get a new friend for your home. Ready? Come on.
Annual Resolutions Number One, Investments.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Preparation.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
No advances, no repayments, requisitions.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Travel.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Authorized various personnel actions as indicated in the summary she employs within jurisdiction of Lorraine County Commissioners.
Mr. Cordez.
Thank you Commissioner Kayla, I do have a couple potential I don't want to discuss with the Board, economic development and maintenance, also purchase of real estate and one pending legal matter. All those topics will have under Sunshine Act for Executive Session Discussions. Sorry to ask, at conclusion of our regular board meeting today, we go into Executive Session and talk about those items, and I have to explain. Thank you.
Approved with the reading in the minutes of May 2nd.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Amendment Resolution Seventeen, four fifty-three, adopted July 12th, 2017, in-adjourned attorney fees, set amendment to reflect ten A on reimbursement and payment relating to the thirty ninety diey timeframe.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
More of a bookkeeping move than anything else, but we are getting a reduction in our reimbursement in regards to in-adjourned fees because the dollars are less than what they've been, so we down to forty percent range.
That's ridiculous.
Yes.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Approved various change orders for the historic courthouse renovation project, ten to Moser Construction for various outside work for a total sixty-eight thousand seven hundred and seven dollars, and five to South Shore Electric for lighting for a total of one thousand seven hundred and seventy-six dollars ninety cents.
So moved.
Second.
We're getting closer to getting it done, aren't we?
We are.
Well, we are. You saw the irrigation system going in, the fencing's going in. We opted facade vice trying to seed up a lawn and bring that, and it would take quite a bit of time, and as you know, we've got to launch everything in late June, so I'm thinking the sod will go in in the next couple of weeks, and we'll just start cleaning and getting everything ready. It's just about done.
Now we're gonna get a lot of miles down the road.
I hope so, I hope so.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Airport, authorized application to ODOT Office of Aviation for our fiscal year nineteen funds in the amount of six hundred and twenty-three thousand four hundred and thirty-eight dollars for the taxi A and B Lightning Project, grant is ninety-five percent with local share of thirty-two thousand eight hundred and twelve dollars.
So moved.
Second.
This is drug of choice.
Yeah, isn't this wonderful?
Twenty years.
Yep, twenty years more, but you know it's only five, thirty-two grand, we're gonna have six hundred and fifty grand tied up, you know.
Twenty years more, you married to the FAA.
Yeah, there we go.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Community Development, approve an interim agreement with Neighborhood House Alliance, Lorraine, in the amount of seventy-one thousand five hundred for the Meals on Wheels program effective January 1st, 2018 through August 31st, 2019, from CDBG fiscal year seventeen.
So moved.
Second.
Is this about what we normally get, or has it been reduced again?
Thank you Board, this has been a small reduction, again, as we've seen year over year. The one thing that kinda makes it a little harder to see is that it's now a two-year allocation rather than an annual, so it is a cut and it's gonna impact them for the next two years, and it's just a continuing trend. However, I will say that this Board had recommended the full fifteen percent go to the Meals on Wheels program, that is the maximum amount we could submit to them to help support this needed program.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
It's unfortunate, like I said, it's also a wellness check for people, maybe the only person that elderly individual sees that day, and it's unfortunate that they keep cutting our allocation.
Well, you know, they've cut our allocation, then they added more responsibility to our allocation, so it's not just that the dollars have shrunk, the area we have to cover has grown, so it's twofold, it's unfortunate.
It is. And I understand the Southern Lorraine County Meals on Wheels is struggling with their program as well, too, and I don't know, some people in Washington are very good at exercising being mean, so it's unfortunate.
I think the Office on Aging is still in discussions with Job and Family Services about some Title Twenty money or something that they might be able to use, hopefully.
Yeah, it's possibly with Title Twenty, I'll have a chat with them and see what we can do.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Accept recommendations of Tax and Sentive Review Council and per the Turk Report, which includes the review of eleven tax abatement agreements and recommendation to continue one, ten, and discontinue one.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Did we have a PowerPoint on this that we were gonna go over? Don, Jerry? Okay, come on up.
Changed their mind.
I guess so.
Even fully loaded, this is nice. Well, once again, it's good to see the Board, and especially such auspicious good news. We met last month, or really now, end of March, and representing the Board of Commissioners as well as the county auditor, we had school boards and our local governments, we were able to take a look at how our tax incentives are performing and whether or not they're living up to a level of expectation, and I'm pleased to announce that they are. We had eleven agreements to take a look at on Enterprise Zone, these are key in that they actually support job creation and investment in real property by the private sector. We also looked at a lot of TIF projects throughout, primarily Avon and North Ridgeville have really taken to using these TIFs, but there are a couple others throughout the county, and these are used where to support public infrastructure that not only supports continued growth in areas, but also provides targeted infrastructure improvements that can also, if done correctly, lengthen the life of our existing assets. A lot of what's going along in Route Eighty-three, well, there's a lot of tremendous growth there, there was also improvements to sewers made and things like that, so that we're continuing to reinvest in infrastructure as well, and kinda fill in the gaps between some populated places. Overall, the biggest number I think everyone should take a look at is that in our Enterprise Zone tax agreements, we were promised one hundred and thirty-three jobs. That's a good number of jobs, but our private sector, our recipients actually delivered three hundred and eight full-time jobs, so they far exceeded. And similar on that private investment in building buildings, these abatements are only percentage of, they're not hundred percent, so we are seeing increases in our tax duplicate, additional monies going to schools now, and as these abatements fall off, we will then collect all of the money that is, would have been collected otherwise but for the abatement. And that brings me up to the last one, there is one agreement that we did recommend for canceling, and that was solely because these agreements are but-for agreements. These agreements need to be put into place before anything is done. Unfortunately for the one company, they were unable to complete their project, and so they never received a benefit, they never received any taxpayer assistance, and we canceled their agreement. We are hopeful that in the near future, they might be able to reconfigure their project and bring it back and bring us the job creation that they anticipate. And so with that, we'll be doing this again next year, and we'll be looking at at least ten agreements again, and hopefully these numbers will continue to improve. And Jerry and I are open for any questions you may have on this. Thank you.
Great job.
Board?
Yeah, no, just thrilled to see that we were off the mark on jobs projected, so that's always great to...
In a good way.
In a good way, you're right, exactly, that's what I was gonna say, normally it's in a bad way, but that's just great.
We do urge them to be realistic, but also conservative, we wanna make sure that they're not selling us a story, and so in these last couple of years have just been really good to our local companies that have been growing. And again, every company was there, and we had some good referrals out of these meetings to workforce development, these companies are looking to hire more still, and we're hopeful that we'll see a couple of additional agreements coming out as we see additional expansions. And then also, they were very interested in the program that Lorraine County Community College has with the, it's not an internship, the apprenticeship program, so where they are now going to look to invest in their existing workforce, upskill them, and be able to elevate them, and then bring in new people underneath to fill in those jobs, so I think we have a very good system that is doing well at this point in time, and we're constantly looking for ways to improve, so thank you.
Great job, guys.
Yeah, I think it's always good for the public to know that we have those clawbacks in there, so that if companies don't deliver, and you know, as I always say, I'm sure they come to the table with good intentions, but sometimes it just doesn't materialize, but then the whole deal's not completed because the deal performance wasn't there, but this is, this is good to see, it's great to see.
We appreciate the opportunity, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski. Aye.
EMA Homeland Intern and Professional Service Proposal with Mission Critical Partners, Pennsylvania, for Completion of Land Mobile Radio Communication System Assessment, in the amount of seventy-seven thousand seven hundred and twenty-six dollars.
So moved.
Second.
I think we should talk a little bit about this. We got it under EMA Homeland Security, but this actually should be under nine-one-one.
That's what I was gonna ask.
I didn't catch that in the draft, my apologies to the Clerk. As you know, we've launched several big initiatives in Lorraine County, we have New World, Tyler Software, that I'm still surprised we're still trying to debug some of the issues with, but it seems to be working very, very well for all the communities. We have the reverse nine-one-one notification system, we have all but two entities, political subdivisions in Lorraine County on that as well, I'm working on those two, one I believe I got to flop over here soon, it's in the heart of it all, so...
Can't imagine what?
Well, when I explained to the Fire Chief that we can do it for two-hundred and fifty dollars, and he was paying six thousand three hundred out of his equipment account, I think he was gonna put a little pressure where it needed to be applied. He certainly rather buy equipment than paying for software. We've also working with the Fire Departments now on their new software, the event reporting software, that's going to be rolled out, and this is follows in the heels of the GPS that all of the responders are on in Lorraine County, which is God to Police and Fire, was out at ESC this week, yes, earlier this week, gotta remember my weeks here now, and met with the Superintendent's Group and unveiled Phase Two, which is an offer to the school districts to put their buses under the GPS tracking with panic buttons and the ability to monitor the transportation fleet to provide a more secure environment for the students and the bus driver and etc. We'll see where that goes, it was an offering presentation, the Amherst Police Chief did a great job, Joe does a really, really fantastic job, he's been really running point for us on most of this, I told him I'll go there and be window dressing, and he made the presentation, he really has a passion about this, and I can't thank him and Amherst for letting his time be used to this enough, just like Lorraine had a lot of people, and Sheffield Village had a lot of people working on the New World. Without a community coming together, we don't have the resources. Everybody donated time, energy to a lot of these initiatives, so we're in Phase Two. This is a different undertaking that's going to have global reach in Lorraine County. We have various different departments on different radio frequencies, using different equipment, that's not compatible, back when there wasn't a lot of money around for Homeland Security, this was supposed to be an issue that got resolved, most communities it did not get resolved, and then they also narrow-banded the radio frequencies, which caused a whole bunch of problems. With radio traffic, we spent probably close to a million dollars fixing as best we could, most of that in Lorraine County for as many people as we could, which, again, it's, we look at the service out of nine-one-one as a global issue to everybody, and that passes over every boundary. So it's time for us now to come together and resolve this equipment issue if we can. What it needs, it needs a pivot point, and it needs leadership. And so the Police Chiefs Association, the Fire Chiefs Association came and met, and I spoke with you folks about this some time, a couple weeks ago, and we told them to get a proposal, and that we will do what we've done with the other solutions, and we'll work towards getting everybody up compatible. Now, I don't know where it's gonna go, what it's gonna mean, we're talking about maybe globalizing radio equipment in Lorraine County, maybe globalizing repair, but the first thing is we gotta do this inventory and figure out what we have the most of, what's working, what's not working, and I gotta be honest with you, I have no clue, we need help on that. I think the proposal's very reasonable for what they wanna do, and I'm hopeful this summer, we'll start seeing what we need to do going forward, and I think this is gonna be a little bit of a long slug, it took us a few years with the other initiatives, but this is the starting point, and this is the leadership that I'm hoping you'll put into this, so that we can improve the community even that much more.
Wonderful.
Backing up to the GPS, did we ever offer that to the Engineers Office for their snowpot trucks?
Not yet, I think when, if I recall correctly, our rollout was going to be the Safety Forces, responders, EMT, then we were going to roll it out to the schools with the buses before we rolled it into public vehicles.
Okay.
We have a thousand licenses, I think we're using about four or five hundred now in that neighborhood, we have the ability to expand the licenses. There's a small cost for the equipment, it's just a few thousand dollars once you have the equipment, then there's a very teeny monthly charge for the airtime for the GPS units, but the bulk of it's been bought, you bought that, I think about two years, year and a half ago, so if we need to expand it, we will. It was nice meeting with the Superintendents, I think it caught them a little by surprise what we offered, because we hadn't put any information out there until we met with them all. I think over the next few months, I'll be having one-on-one with some of the school superintendents, and we'll see just how much they desire to do that. Some of them contracted buses out, so that could be a bit of an issue, but the equipment's portable. The only thing that's not portable is the one panic button that, you know, can be installed on a dashboard, but the GPS unit itself is, it's two leads that get hooked up to a hot in the ground, and it's very easy to remove it and place it in different equipment.
Wonderful.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Sallaway, approved District Market Development Grant for Vermillion River Reservation, the amount of eight thousand three hundred and twenty-five dollars for the Baconwood, Baconwoods Playground.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Keith, you wanna come up and talk about it for me?
Sure.
Nice to see you back, Keith.
Good to be back.
You're actually doing better.
Welcome back.
Yeah, this is a sixteen thousand six hundred and fifty dollar total project, of which they're asking for a grant from us for eight thousand three hundred and twenty-five. This is to replace a playground at the Bacon Vermillion Reservation there, and near Vermillion and Metro Parks. They came to me last year, and we started working on this project together. It's nice that they come in the office and worked with us and developed an app, saves us a lot of problems, so kicking it back and forth, so we got this one through very quickly, and it's there for your decision today.
Wonderful. Thanks, Keith.
Thanks, Keith.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Workforce authorized payments to be made for various programmatic administrative costs that are available through WIO and TANA funding.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Law Library, intern MOU, a statewide consortium of county law libraries, resource boards for a grant in the amount of three thousand four hundred and seventy dollars and thirty cents for the county law library to purchase computers, monitors, and software, effective April twenty-sixth, 2018 through December thirty-first, 2018.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Hey Jim, does this mean we don't have to buy books anymore?
You know, I gotta tell you, I don't think that books are ever going to be obsolete. If you spend a lot of time trying to read this stuff online, you realize that it's a lot easier to do with books when you're flipping back through multiple pages and you wanna re-reference what you looked before, it becomes quite tedious on a tablet. Maybe one day, something new will come out, but right now, I don't see this completely replacing books, sometimes sitting down with, like the revised code, the book itself is a lot more convenient.
I know when I was reviewing legislation in committee in Columbus, they were trying to convert everybody over to just using the iPads, and it's nice to still have the paper there that you can go back and forth and reference everything, otherwise you're sliding the screen all over the place.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Engineer wore contract to Carville Paving Stone, the amount of four hundred and forty-eight thousand, two hundred and forty-six dollars and fifty cents for the West River Road Surfacing Project, car lot ownership of the city of Elaria. Nine bids were open on April twenty-fourth, this being the most responsive, complying with specifications, no substitutions, but will use American Railway Logistics, Inc., Richveiled for work zone items, maintain traffic, sign engine striping. OPWC will contribute eighty-nine percent, four-point-five percent will be paid by the city of Elaria, and the balance will be paid from the Engineered Railway Project Account. Issue notice to proceed on or before July fifteenth and complete on or before October thirty-first. Authorize administrative notify the order to release, retain as a completion of project.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Authorized participation in the ODOT winter contract for two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen road sold.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Wore contract to Henry Bergman Genoa in the round of five hundred and fifty-two thousand, turned twenty-two dollars and seventy-two cents for the two thousand eighteen countywide chip and seal program. Forbid received on April twenty-fourth, this being the most responsive, complying with specifications. Issue notice to proceed on or before May twenty-first and complete on or before September first, and authorize administrative notify the order to release, retain as a completion of project.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Cordez.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, I hope you're feeling better today.
Bein' there.
Two things, I wanna congratulate the culinary students at the college, last night was their Hell's Kitchen, final night of training, it was really, really nice event. If you haven't dined there before, they were open a couple days a week for several months now, but they're closed, the season's coming to an end because graduation's coming up. The, so it was really good to see them all with Chef last night, and they were very enthusiastic after they went to a big grind, finishing up and having their final meal, and all of that was their final, part of their final grading last night. It's really great to see these young people in that culinary program and spend time in the kitchen, dining there, and seeing people with, you know, looking for a bright future, so I wanted to say congratulations to them, and the second thing is gonna be a bit of a surprise to you, but I only had about thirty-minute window opportunity for us to do this, and so I did it on your behalf, certainly hope you support it, because I already did it. But Cabela's is coming back, they're bringing their, the National Fishing Tournament this year back here. Yes, that was a bit of a shock to me, too, Commissioner Kayla.
That means the other community backed out.
Actually, I think that something happened with regard to the ability to fish there, with rains and flooding, and so they had to select another community, and, you know, according to them, their experience here was that good that they turned to us first, and they asked if we would be interested. We had a very, they wanted to know, there was yes or no, the cost is substantially less than the last time.
I was gonna ask.
Substantially less, but I, it's, you know, this is the thing the Visitors Bureau is supposed to be bringing to Lorraine County, it's very productive, as you know, we thought the economic impact last time was about a quarter million dollars into the community, maybe a little more, I know they had a smaller fishing tournament a week or two ago.
No, this past Saturday.
Was this past Saturday?
They couldn't go out Friday because of weather, Saturday, because I was down there at the same time Black River Clean Up was going on, and Richard Cordray and Betty Sutton, there were a lot of things happening on the waterfront, Saturday morning.
I went by some of the motels, and I saw lots of boats on trailers, so that told me a lot of people came here, spent money here, ate here, and while the Cabela's is a little bit of a closed environment when it comes to the anglers, it does bring a national attention to Lorraine County and our waterfront. So I'll have more to follow on that, I didn't have an opportunity, like I said, to talk with you, but we'll be doing some of the sponsorships, we'll be more taking care of putting up their administrative team and hotels and things like that, similar to some things we've done on other events, but we'll get a press release and more to follow pretty quickly, but it's good news for Lorraine County.
It's kinda neat, you say, talking about, you know, Visitors Bureau, what we're doing with it now, was as I was standing at the polling place yesterday, just a discussion among people there, one restaurant week got brought up, and the cupcake crawl, and I started talking about, we've got the wing thing coming, and, you know, the other things that are working in, the ice cream.
It's a scoop.
Did you get my additional ones?
Uh, maybe.
I sent additional ones the other day, because I know about every licky stand in the county.
You would.
I know where the ice cream stands are, so, but we were talking about those, and people were really excited and...
Yeah, a few folks have opted not to be in the scoop, so Sandy probably has forwarded that on directly to Jen. I was surprised, some people didn't really wanna be involved in it, and others did, so we have, you're right, we have the scoop coming, we have the...
King of Wings, or Wing Thing.
The Wing Thing, we have the Antiques Trail with the treasures, Shoolway Treasures or whatever they're calling it, all that'll be unveiled here in the next couple of weeks. And, you know, we're looking for other initiatives, things that Lorraine County can look forward to as annual events, so we can build upon that inertia and have people's, you know, let's take a ride over to Lorraine County. The, but we started very, we started with not much, and so we're gradually building into it. I wanna see us do something with the arts and with the trolley and things like that, like they do in Akron when they do the Arts Week, and they actually do free transportation and so forth. We're not as tightly compacted with some of the arts, but we need to figure a way of demonstrating that more, and of course, we need to take a look this, later this year, and see what, if anything, you know, the follow-the-fish, firefish, excuse me, firefish, and see what they're going to do this year. So a lot of exciting things coming up in the future. But Cabela's turned into us. I realized that they were someplace else, but remembering, they committed to that before they even did their fishing tournament here, the first time they were committed to that other community. So I, I think it really speaks volume to...
Yeah, their experience here.
Right, to what we did here the last time. And hopefully we're able to nail them down a lot more and really make that, you know, an event that Lorraine County owns.
That would be great.
Yeah, it was, it was a huge success and it was a real exciting day. I went down there the day that they did the opening day to explain all the ground rules and fed everybody and talked with all the various crews and, you know, I mean, we had folks in from, what, Oklahoma and the Dakotas and all around the country. And I've got to tell you, the feedback and the positive response was just overwhelming. They just loved it, so I'm not surprised they're coming back and that was a, that was a great catch for us last time. This is a big catch again. So we, yeah, we proved ourselves and, you know, heck, if they want to come in every year, we can probably work something out, right?
I think we, I think we can. So I'm understanding that the decision was okay, but...
Under consideration.
Under consideration. Okay, I'll sweat a little while on that one, all right? Thanks a lot, I yield to counsel.
Mr. Turnus.
I have no report this morning.
Wow, no litigation?
Commissioners' report.
Well, Thursday, I attended my Community Corrections Board meeting. Mr. Cordez is now on the board and he attended his first meeting. A lot of information to share between the agencies that deal with corrections and treatment as I'm sure you would agree, it was a good meeting.
It's a very good meeting, very productive, a lot of energy in the room.
Yeah, yeah. Thursday evening, I attended an opiate forum that was held in Wellington. Chief Barfield and his department are doing a great job getting people with addiction the help they need and word's gotten out in the community about how much compassion the department has and how well those struggling with addiction are treated when they come to the Wellington Police Department. What happens is let's get real, is contacted and a peer support person is there and help them on their journey to their recovery. There are numerous people that told their story who are now sober and in recovery thanks to the program the Wellington Police Department offers, so great job out there in Wellington. Friday, we had a meeting, Recovery One, which is Golden Acres as our treatment facility and we're trying to identify the gaps we have and how Golden Acres can fill the needs of the community and also be a hub, like a triage center with data collection to help people and also take the burden off of our area hospitals and our jail. That evening, I attended a steak fry at Tom's Country Place for Dennis Will. Great steak.
Yeah.
Really good, nice, very good turnout. Saturday afternoon, I attended a fundraiser for Road to Hope, which is one of our recovery houses in Lorraine County. They've been providing service for our community for probably ten years now and they do a really good job. Yesterday, as everybody knows, was Election Day, so I want to congratulate all those people who won their elections and those that didn't. Hopefully they'll support those who, that did and thank you to all the people that came out to vote and also those who supported our levies for mental health and DD that was on the ballot this time. Oh, and one more thing, I'll give Hal a copy of this. Our collections center is going to have new hours coming up. We're located at five four zero South Abbey Road and our new hours, starting May twenty-first, are going to be, it's Monday, Wednesday, and Saturday. Monday from twelve to four, Wednesday from twelve to six, and Saturday from nine to three, so I will have Hal post this up for those of you that watch this on TV. End of my report.
Let's make sure the press sees that too for the new hours. We talked about yesterday, Policy Committee, speaking of solid waste, we had our solid waste Policy Committee meeting yesterday, going over more portions of the plan. Actually Keith was on the radio this morning, NWEOL, talking about the plan and moving forward. But also, good news, Lorraine County got two EPA grant awards, one twenty-five thousand dollars for our Ag Tire Collection Event, which will be sometime in September, we're expecting, correct Keith? And then we got two hundred thousand bucks for a new baler. Our collections center needs a new baler, something to handle the process, paper and cardboard products, will get things done quicker, faster, less labor intensive, so...
Yeah, Keith's here if you want him to.
I was going to bring him up in a second.
Okay, sorry.
Let me say the good stuff and he can say all the, you know, minutia. Yeah, go ahead Keith, come on up.
So that's tires for agricultural?
Correct.
Okay.
And, you know, that's, that's a tough, those things are hard to handle.
Yeah, they're big.
Can only make so many swings.
Huge, really huge.
Go ahead Keith.
Commissioners, we're getting inundated more and more with cardboard, I'm going to be honest with you. We had a mountain probably twenty feet tall, the clients from Murray Ridge were working on yesterday. It took all day to bail it, all right? We've got a little old grocery store style baler down there that we borrowed from over on the East Warehouse years ago and put it in the, in that, down there and started baling cardboard and different things we could sell. And now we're being overrun with the shred truck, we need, we need to be able to bail our own shredded material. All these things need to happen, so we're looking at dual ram, it'll have to go out for bid, you know? And new dual ram auto tie system that will service the county for years to come. It's a good investment, all right?
Thank you Keith, appreciate it.
No problem.
Also in regards to solid waste, had a little discussion, Republic sent out a new notice to everyone about what can and can't be recycled. No styrofoam guys. So all those to-go containers we take home from events, we can't recycle those now, but they're not acceptable in the recycling stream, they end up being off shot. But also busy week. Congratulations, Mexican Mutual always does a great job with Cinco de Mayo, their buffet last week and then the parade on Saturday. It was a great turnout, beautiful day, people all along the parade route. What else did we have? We had, again, Dennis Will Steak Fry, always a sellout. Rich Cordray and Betty Sutton had a campaign stop at Black River Landing Saturday morning as I talked about with everything ongoing on down there and actually Betty Sutton went down to the Black River Cleanup.
Oh, cool.
To see what was going on. They finally got the old car out of the river there.
She pushed it out, did she?
Huh? Yeah, she pushed it out. Cash for clunkers. Exactly. Also again, Election Day, congratulations to all the winners and those who didn't, hope you continue to participate, but turnout's abysmal. In this day and age, everybody likes to complain about government and everything going wrong and you get fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen percent. The nice thing about that is mean eighty-one percent of the people have no reason to complain anything about government if they're not participating.
You know, but interestingly, you saw Lorraine County once again rally around its support services for those that are...
Without a doubt, right.
The, the mental health levy and the DD levy passed overwhelmingly with strong support, which is unusual in a primary. They can pass a primary, but usually the victory is not that large, so Lorraine County can tend to demonstrate his compassion for those that need some assistance, a hand up, not a hand down.
I stood out at the polls six, seven hours and had one gentleman come out and complain about the levies. I will never, ever vote for a levy. I said, really, developmental disability and mental health issues?
Renewals.
Renewals and actually, I think Charlita White Anis was at the same polling, I think she said, the renewals, they don't cost you any more money. Okay, we don't want to take care of those most in need, but it happens. But it was a beautiful day at the polls, wish we'd had better turnout participation. End of my report.
I just want to remind everyone at home that if you will please mark down on your calendar, June twenty-third, that's when we will unveil, have the official grand opening of the new courthouse and also we have the Fire and Police Memorial over there.
It'll, we'll start the event sometime after seven in the evening.
Seven, okay.
We'll have, we'll have tours of the facility and then we will have the lighting, we'll have a dedication and a lighting of the courthouse.
Food?
We have food, the group, the group is...
Why do I, I'm always the one that has...
There's food.
You know what, if you're really hungry, go to the International Festival first and eat and then come here. Okay?
We're, we're going to make it a bit of an event, we have a lot to do. We want to rededicate the WW2 Memorial, possibly the Workers Memorial, although they just did an event. And of course, we're going to unveil the Last Watch Monument, Police and Fire Memorial. So that's, that's going to be quite a, quite an event in itself. We'll do the lighting of the courthouse and then we'll do the lighting of the new memorial. It's, I'm looking forward to it. After seven, probably run until about nine-thirty, quarter to ten, so we're going to have some food, we're going to have some events, we're going to have some show and tell vehicles for families to ring the bell, things like that. So we're trying to put that all together right now. The team of your, your folks are working on that. We'll have more to follow, but it'll definitely be an evening event and twenty-third is the date. Rain or shine, we're going to have something. Let's hope for shine because there's not a lot we can do in the rain.
Exactly, exactly. Yeah, and then also the days are longer, so we, to be able to light the courthouse, it'll probably end up being somewhere around nine-fifteen, nine-thirty, probably by the time we get to...
We'll hope for nine-thirty.
Somewhere around there. But obviously, we're real excited about it and being able to save the courthouse and find a functioning governmental use for it. So it's, with the investment we've made, it should be here for another fifty years.
It'll be longer than you and I.
Exactly, yeah, we'll, we'll all be long gone by then, so...
All right, one to hundred.
No, okay. But, so mark that on your calendars, June twenty-third. Had a taping, Don Romancik and myself went over to WEOL to talk about the lakefront connectivity plan, a lot of the cleanup initiatives that are taking place along the Black River and also talked about Recovery One. Congratulations Mexican Mutual on their event last Wednesday, wasn't able to attend, but Joel Arrendondo and the whole group over there. As I always say, it's one of the friendliest places in Lorraine County, I just always love going to Mexican Mutual. Also, we're continuing our ongoing meetings with the Puerto Rican Transition Team that's helping the families transition to Lorraine County. We believe that as time goes on, probably more families who are already here then will be having loved ones come over and helping to assist them. And now that the weather's nicer, I'm sure that people maybe want to make the transition here when the weather's nice instead of going through the cold and lengthy winter that we had. So that's, that's working out well. I want to congratulate the Alaria Education Foundation on their event the other day at Nick Abraham. They do an amazing job supporting our Alaria schools. Want to commend nurses and corrections officers. It's National Nurses Week and also Corrections Officer Week and couldn't think of, wow, it doesn't get much tougher than being a nurse or being a corrections officer, but very demanding jobs and just very rewarding fields for those in it, but we commend them for the job that they do day in and day out. Congratulations to all the candidates and thank you to the community for supporting our Mental Health Board and also Murray Ridge. That completes my report. Mr. President?
For respondents?
Move the reading be waved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Public comment?
Anyone wishing to address the board this morning? Come on up, Jeff.
Good morning, I'm Jeff Baxter, one sixty Burns Road, Alaria, Ohio. Yesterday was the elections, as you all know, and I, for the second time, I worked all day as a public elections official. I was stationed at the Nazarene Community Church over on one thirteen Clemens Avenue. And we did have a very low turnout, as you might expect, and you know, the numbers say that, and that about nineteen percent roughly of Lorraine County voters. And it's interesting to note, I went back and looked at the numbers from just four years ago, twenty-fourteen, the same general election, and we had more, let me get this right, we had about forty-eight thousand people vote. So we had about six thousand more people vote four years ago than we did yesterday, but today, we actually have six thousand more voters in Lorraine County. About two hundred and nine thousand. Back then, we had about two hundred and three thousand, okay? And as you know, you know, I was connected with the sales tax issue that happened over the last year and a half. And one of the complaints I hear from people today is, is why do I even want to vote? Because my vote doesn't count. It gets overridden. So I believe the four commissioners has a burden to bear on why the vote turnout was a little bit lower, why people think their vote doesn't count. Thank you.
Anyone else? Motion to move an executive session is outlined by the County Administrator.
All right, with that connection, motion.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
This has been a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at the Administration Building, two twenty-six Middle Avenue, fourth floor downtown Alaria. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners page and click on View Agenda for a printable copy of the agenda. Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at nine-thirty at the Administration Building, two twenty-six Middle Avenue, fourth floor downtown Alaria. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners page, then click on View Agenda.
Good morning, could we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, welcome to Lorraine County Board of Commissioners meeting, Wednesday, May ninth, two thousand and eighteen. Commissioner Lundey, welcome.
Thank you, our word of inspiration, in the end, people appreciate frankness more than flattery.
And I have the dog this morning. Come here, come here, come on, we'll get you on TV, okay? We'll get you home. Come on, look that way. There you go. Our featured dog this week is about a two-year-old male pit bull mix. He's got a great personality, he was found in North Ridgeville, extremely friendly and he's available for adoption now. We also have fourteen total dogs at the dog kennel, so come down, see us, get a new friend for your home. Ready? Come on. Madam Clerk?
End of Resolutions, number one, investments.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Reparations.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Transfers.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
No advances, no repayments, requisitions.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Travel.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Bills.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Authorized various personnel actions as indicated in the summary, should be employees Authorized various personnel actions as indicated in the summary sheet of the jurisdiction of Lorraine County Commissioners?
Mr. Cordez?
Thank you, Commissioner Kayla. I do have a couple potential I don't want to discuss with the board, economic development and maintenance. Also, purchase of real estate and one pending legal matter. All those topics will have under Sunshine Act for Executive Session Discussions. Sorry to ask, at the conclusion of our regular board meeting today, we go into executive session and talk about those items, and I have to explain. Thank you.
Approve and waive the reading in the minutes of May 2nd?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Amendment Resolution 17453 adopted July 12, 2017, indigent attorney fees set amendment to reflect 10A on reimbursement and payment relating to the 3090 timeframe.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
More of a bookkeeping move than anything else, but we are getting a reduction in our reimbursement in regards to indigent fees because the dollars are less than what they've been, so we down to 40% range.
That's ridiculous.
Yes.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Prove various change orders for the historic courthouse renovation project, 10 to Mose or construction for various outside work for total $68,707, and five to South Shore Electric for lighting for a total of $1,776.90.
So moved.
Second.
We're getting closer to getting it done, aren't we?
We are.
Well, we are. You saw the irrigation system going in, the fencing's going in. We opted facade, vice trying to seed up a lawn and bring that, and it would take quite a bit of time, and as you know, we've got to launch everything in late June, so I'm thinking the sod will go in in the next couple of weeks, and we'll just start cleaning and getting everything ready. It's just about done.
Now we're going to get a lot of miles down the road.
I hope so. I hope so.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Airport authorized application to ODOT Office of Aviation for fiscal year 19 funds in the amount of $623,438 for the taxi AMB Lightning Project. Grant is 95% with local share of $32,812.
So moved.
Second.
They should drug up tools.
Yeah, isn't this wonderful?
20 years.
Yep, 20 years more, but you know, it's only 532 grand. We're going to have 650 grand tied up, you know.
20 years more, you married to the FAA.
Yeah, there we go.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Community development, approve an enter and agreement with Neighborhood House Alliance, Lorraine, in the amount of $71,500 for the Meals on Wheels program effective January 1st, 2018 through August 31st, 2019, from CDBG fiscal year 17.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Is this about what we normally get, or has it been reduced again?
Thank you, Board. This has been a small reduction, again, as we've seen year over year. The one thing that kind of makes it a little harder to see is that it's now a two-year allocation rather than an annual. So it is a cut, and it's going to impact them for the next two years, and it's just a continuing trend. However, I will say that this board had recommended the full 15% go to the Meals on Wheels program. That is the maximum amount we could submit to them to help support this needed program.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
It's unfortunate. Like I said, it's also a wellness check for people, maybe the only person that elderly individual sees that day, and it's unfortunate that they keep cutting our allocation.
Well, you know, they've cut our allocation, then they added more responsibility to our allocation. So it's not just that the dollars have shrunk, the area we have to cover has grown. So it's twofold. It's unfortunate.
It is.
And I understand the Southern Lorraine County Meals on Wheels is struggling with their program as well, too, and I don't know, some people in Washington are very good at exercising being mean, so that's unfortunate.
I think the Office on Aging is still in discussions with Job and Family Services about some Title 20 money or something that they might be able to use, hopefully.
Yeah, it's possibly with Title 20. I'll have a chat with them and see what we can do.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Accept recommendations of Tax and Cenereview Council and per the Turk Report, which includes the review of 11 tax abatement agreements and recommendation to continue 10 and discontinue 1.
So moved.
Second.
Did we have a PowerPoint on this that we were going to go over? Don, Jerry? Okay, come on up.
Changed their mind.
I guess so.
Even fully loaded. This is nice. Well, once again, it's good to see the board in especially such auspicious good news. We met last month, or really now, end of March, and representing the Board of Commissioners as well as the county auditor, we had school boards and our local governments, we were able to take a look at how our tax incentives are performing and whether or not they're living up to a level of expectation. And I'm pleased to announce that they are. We had 11 agreements to take a look at on Enterprise Zone. These are key in that they actually support job creation and investment in real property by the private sector. We also looked at a lot of TIF projects throughout, primarily Avon and North Ridgeville have really taken to using these TIFs, but there are a couple others throughout the county. And these are used where to support public infrastructure that not only supports continued growth in areas, but also provides targeted infrastructure improvements that can also, if done correctly, lengthen the life of our existing assets. A lot of what's going along in Route 83, while there's a lot of tremendous growth there, there was also improvements to sewers made and things like that, so that we're continuing to reinvest in infrastructure as well and kind of fill in the gaps between some populated places. Overall, the biggest number I think everyone should take a look at is that in our Enterprise Zone tax agreements, we were promised 133 jobs. That's a good number of jobs, but our private sector, our recipients actually delivered 308 full-time jobs, so they far exceeded. And similar on that private investment in building buildings, these abatements are only percentage of, they're not 100%, so we are seeing increases in our tax duplicate, additional monies going to schools now, and as these abatements fall off, we will then collect all of the money that is, would have been collected otherwise but for the abatement. And that brings me up to the last one. There is one agreement that we did recommend for canceling, and that was solely because these agreements are but-for agreements. These agreements need to be put into place before anything is done. Unfortunately for the one company, they were unable to complete their project, and so they never received a benefit. They never received any taxpayer assistance, and we canceled their agreement. We are hopeful that in the near future, they might be able to reconfigure their project and bring it back and bring us the job creation that they anticipate. And so with that, we'll be doing this again next year, and we'll be looking at at least 10 agreements again, and hopefully these numbers will continue to improve. And Jerry and I are open for any questions you may have on this. Thank you.
Great job.
Board?
Yeah, no, just thrilled to see that we were off the mark on jobs projected, so that's always great to...
In a good way.
In a good way. Exactly, that's what I was going to say. Normally, it's in a bad way, but that's just great.
Well, we do urge them to be realistic, but also conservative. We want to make sure that they're not selling us a story, and so in these last couple of years, have just been really good to our local companies that have been growing. And again, every company was there, and we had some good referrals out of these meetings to workforce development. These companies are looking to hire more still, and we're hopeful that we'll see a couple of additional agreements coming out as we see additional expansions. And then also, they were very interested in the program that Lorraine County Community College has with the, it's not an internship, the apprenticeship program. So where they are now going to look to invest in their existing workforce, upskill them, and be able to elevate them, and then bring in new people underneath to fill in those jobs. So I think we have a very good system that is doing well at this point in time, and we're constantly looking for ways to improve. So thank you.
Great job, guys.
Yeah, I think it's always good for the public to know that we have those clawbacks in there, so that if companies don't deliver, and you know, as I always say, I'm sure they come to the table with good intentions, but sometimes it just doesn't materialize, but you know, but then the whole deal's not completed because the deal performance wasn't there. But this is, this is good to see. It's great to see.
We appreciate the opportunity. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
EMA Homeland Intern and Professional Service Proposal with Mission Critical Partners, Pennsylvania for Completion of Land Mobile Radio Communications System Assessment in the amount of $77,226.
So moved.
Second.
I think we should talk a little bit about this. We got it under EMA Homeland Security, but this actually should be under 911.
That's what I was going to ask.
I didn't catch that in the draft. My apologies to the clerk. As you know, we've launched several big initiatives in Lorraine County. We have New World, Tyler Software. That, I'm still surprised, we're still trying to debug some of the issues with, but it seems to be working very, very well for all the communities. We have the reverse 911 notification system. We have all but two entities, political subdivisions in Lorraine County on that as well. I'm working on those two. One, I believe I got to flop over here soon. It's in the heart of it all, so...
Can't answer me what?
Well, when I explained to the fire chief that we can do it for $250, and he's paying $6,300 out of his equipment account, I think he was going to put a little pressure where it needed to be applied. He'd certainly rather buy equipment than paying for software. We've also, working with the fire departments now on their new software, the event reporting software, that's going to be rolled out. And this is, follows in the heels of the GPS that all of the responders are on in Lorraine County, which is God to Police and Fire. Was out at ESC this week, yes, earlier this week, I remember my weeks here now, and met with the superintendent's group and unveiled Phase Two, which is an offer to the school districts to put their buses under the GPS tracking with panic buttons and the ability to monitor the transportation fleet to provide a more secure environment for the students and the bus driver and et cetera. We'll see where that goes. It was an offering presentation. The Amherst Police Chief did a great job. Joe does a really, really fantastic job. He's been really running point for us on most of this. I told him I'll go there and be window dressing, and he made the presentation. He really has a passion about this, and I can't thank him and Amherst for letting his time be used to this enough, just like Lorraine had a lot of people and Sheffield Village had a lot of people working on the New World. Without a, without a community coming together, we don't have the resources. Everybody donated time, energy to a lot of these initiatives. So we're in Phase Two. This is a different undertaking that's going to have global reach in Lorraine County. We have various different departments on different radio frequencies, using different equipment that's not compatible. Back when there was a lot of money around for Homeland Security, this was supposed to be an issue that got resolved. Most communities, it did not get resolved, and then they also narrow-banded the radio frequencies, which caused a whole bunch of problems. With radio traffic, we spent probably close to $1 million fixing as best we could, most of that in Lorraine County for as many people as we could, which, again, it's, we look at the service at a 911 as a global issue to everybody, and that passes over every boundary. So it's time for us now to come together and resolve this equipment issue if we can. What it needs, it needs a pivot point, and it needs leadership. And so the Police Chiefs Association, the Fire Chiefs Association came and met, and I spoke with you folks about this some, a couple of weeks ago, and we told them to get a proposal, and that we will do what we've done with the other solutions, and we'll work towards getting everybody up and compatible. Now, I don't know where it's going to go, what it's going to mean. We're talking about maybe globalizing radio equipment in Lorraine County, maybe globalizing repair. But the first thing is we've got to do this inventory and figure out what we have the most of, what's working, what's not working. And I got to be honest with you, I have no clue. We need, we need, we need help on that. I think the proposal is very reasonable for what they want to do, and I'm hopeful this summer, we'll start seeing what we need to do going forward. And I think this is going to be a little bit of a long slug. It took us a few years with the other initiatives, but this is the starting point, and this is the leadership that I'm hoping you'll put into this so that we can improve the community even that much more.
Wonderful.
Backing up to the GPS, did we ever offer that to the engineer's office for their snow pod trucks?
Not yet. We, I think, if I recall correctly, our rollout was going to be the Safety Forces, responders, EMT, then we were going to roll it out to the schools with the buses before we rolled it into public vehicles. We have 1,000 licenses. I think we're using about 400, 500 now in that neighborhood. We have the ability to expand the licenses. There's a small cost for the equipment. It's just a few thousand dollars once you have the equipment, then there's a very teeny monthly charge for the airtime for the, for the GPS units. But the bulk of it's been bought. You bought that, I think about two years, year and a half ago? So if we need to expand it, we will. It was nice meeting with the superintendents. I think it caught them a little by surprise, what we offered, because we hadn't put any information out there until we met with them all. I think over the next few months, I'll be having one-on-one with some of the school superintendents, and we'll see just how much they desire to do that. Some of them contracted buses out, so that could be a bit of a, an issue, but the equipment's portable. The only thing that's not portable is the one panic button that, you know, can be installed on a dashboard. But the GPS unit itself is, it's two leads that get hooked up to a hot in the ground, and it's very easy to remove it and place it in different equipment.
Wonderful.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Silo waste, approve a district market development grant for Ramion River Reservation in the amount of $8,325 for the Bacon Woods Playground.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Keith, you want to come up and talk about it for Ramion?
Nice to see you back, Keith. Glad you're doing better.
Welcome back.
Yeah, this is a $16,650 total project, of which they're asking for a grant from us for $8,325. This is to replace a playground at the Bacon Ramion Reservation there and near Ramion in Metro Parks. They came to me last year, and we started working on this project together. It's nice that they come in the office and worked with us and developed an app. Saves us a lot of problems, so kicking it back and forth, so we got this one through very quickly, and it's there for your decision today.
Wonderful. Thanks, Keith.
Thanks, Keith.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Workforce authorized payments to be made for various programmatic and administrative costs that are available through WIO and TANAFunding.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Law library, intern MOU, statewide consortium of county law libraries, resource boards for a grant in the amount of $3,470.30 for the county law library to purchase computers, monitors, and software, effective April 26, 2018 through December 31, 2018.
So moved.
Second.
Hey, Jim, does this mean we don't have to buy books anymore?
You know, I got to tell you, I don't think that books are ever going to be obsolete. If you spend a lot of time trying to read this stuff online, you realize that it's a lot easier to do with, with books when you're flipping back through multiple pages and you want to re-reference what you looked before. It becomes quite tedious on a tablet. Maybe one day, something new will come out, but right now, I don't see this completely replacing books. Sometimes sitting down with, like the revised code, the book itself is a lot more convenient.
I know when I was reviewing legislation in committee in Columbus, they were trying to convert everybody over to just using the, you know, the iPads, and it's nice to still have the paper there that you can go back and forth and reference everything, otherwise you're sliding the screen all over the place.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Engineer wore contract to Carville Paving Stone in the amount of $448,246.50 for the West River Road Surfacing Project car lot township of the city of Elyria. Nine bids were open on April 24th, this being the most responsive compliance specifications. No substitutions, but will use American Railway Logistics, Inc., Richfield for work zone items, maintain traffic, signage and striping. OPWC will contribute 89%, 4.5% will be paid by the city of Elyria, and the balance will be paid from the Engineer Railway Project account. Issue notice to proceed honor before July 15th and complete honor before October 31st. Authorize ministry to notify the auditor to release, retain as a completion of project.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Authorized participation in the ODOT winter contract for 2018-2019 road salt.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
For bid received on April twenty-fourth, this being the most responsive, comply with specifications. Issue notice to proceed honor before May twenty-first and complete honor before September first, and authorized administrator notify the auditor to release, retain, and complete the project.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Cortez?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I hope you're feeling better today.
Be in there.
Uh, two things. Uh, wanna congratulate the culinary students for college. Last night was their Hell's Kitchen, final night of, of, uh, training. It was really a, really nice event. Uh, if you haven't dined there before, they were open a couple of days a week for, for several months now, but they're closed. The season's coming to an end because graduation's coming up. Uh, the, the, so, uh, it was really good to see them all with, with Chef last night, and, and they were very enthusiastic after they went to a big grind, uh, finishing up and having their, their final meal, and all of that was their final, part of their final grading last night. Uh, it's really great to see these young people in that culinary program and spend time in the kitchen, dining there, and, and, and seeing people with, you know, looking for a bright future. Uh, so I wanted to say congratulations to them. And the second thing is gonna be a bit of a surprise to you, but I only had about, about thirty-minute window opportunity for us to do this, and so I did it on your behalf. Uh, certainly hope you support it, 'cause I already did it. Uh, but Cabela's is coming back. Uh, they're bringing their, the, the national fishing tournament this year back here. Uh, yes, that was a bit of a shock to me too, Commissioner Kayla.
That means the other community backed out.
Actually, I think that's, it's something happened with, with regard to the ability to fish there, uh, with rains and flooding and-
Wow.
So they had to select another community, and, you know, according to them, that their experience here was that good that they turned to us first, and they asked if we would be interested. Uh, we had a very, they wanted to know. There was yes or no. Uh, the cost is substantially less than the last time.
I was gonna ask.
Substantially less, um, but, but I, I, it's, you know, this is the thing the visitors' bureau is supposed to be bringing to Lorain County. Uh, it's very productive. As you know, uh, we thought the economic impact last time was about a quarter million dollars into the community, maybe a little more. I know they had a smaller fishing tournament a week or two ago.
No, this past Saturday.
It was this past Saturday?
They couldn't go out Friday 'cause of weather, Saturday, 'cause I was down there at the same time Black River Cleanup was going on, and, uh, Rich Cordray and Betty Sutton, there were a lot of things happening on the waterfront Saturday morning.
I, I, I went by some of the motels, and I saw lots of boats on trailers, so that told me a lot of people came here, spent money here, ate here, uh, and while the Cabela's is a little bit of a closed environment when it comes to the anglers, it does bring a national attention to Lorain County and our waterfront. Uh, so I'll have more to follow on that. Uh, I didn't have an opportunity to, to, like I said, to talk with you, uh, but we'll be doing some of the, the sponsorships will not, will be more taking care of, uh, putting up their, their administrative team and hotels and things like that, similar to some things we've done on other events. Uh, but we'll get a press release and more to follow pretty quickly, but, but it's good news for Lorain County.
Yeah, it's a big deal.
It's kinda neat, you say, talking about, you know, visitors' bureau, what we're doing with it now, was as I was standing at the polling place yesterday, uh, just a discussion among people there. One restaurant we got brought up, and, and the cupcake crawl, and I started talking about, we got the wing thing coming, and, you know, the other things that are working in, the ice cream.
The ice cream, the ice, it's a scoop.
Yep. Did you get my additional ones?
Uh, maybe.
I sent additional ones the other day, 'cause I know about every licky stand in the county.
You wouldn't.
I know where the ice cream stands are, so, uh-
The, uh-
But we were talking about those, and people were really excited and-
Yeah, a few folks have opted not to be in the, the scoop, so Sandy will probably have forwarded that on directly to, uh, Jen. I was surprised, some people didn't really wanna be involved in it, and others did. Uh, so we have, you're right, we have the, the scoop coming, we have the, uh-
King of Wings, or Wing Thing.
The Wing Thing. Uh, we have the, uh, Antiques Trail, uh, with the treasure, Shawway Treasures or whatever they're calling it. All that'll be unveiled here in the next couple of weeks. And, and, you know, we're looking for other initiatives. We, things that Lorain County can look forward to as annual events, so we can build upon that inertia and, and have peoples, you know, let's take a ride over to Lorain County. Uh, the, the, uh, but we started very, we started with not much, and so we're gradually building into it. Um, I'm, I wanna see us do something with the arts and, and with the trolley and things like that, like they do in Akron, when they do the, the Arts Week, and they actually do free trans- transportation and, and so forth. Uh, we, we're not as tightly compacted with, with some of the arts, but we need to figure a way of demonstrating that more, and of course, uh, we need to take a look this, later this year and see, see what, if anything, uh, you know, the follow-the-fish, firefish, excuse me, firefish, and see what they're, they're going to do this year. So a lot of exciting things coming up, uh, in, in the future. But Cabela's turning to us. I, I realize that they were someplace else, but remembering, they committed to that before they-
Right.
They even did their fishing tournament here the first time.
Right.
They were committed to that other community.
Right.
So I, I, I think it really speaks volume, uh, to, to-
Yeah, their experience here.
Right, to what we did here the last time. Uh, and hopefully we're able to nail them down a lot more and, and really make that, you know, an event that Lorain County owns.
Annual thing, that would be great.
Yeah, it was a, it was a huge success, and it was, uh, a real exciting day. I went down there the day that they, uh, did the opening day to explain all the ground rules and fed everybody and, and talked with all the various crews, and, you know, I mean, we had folks in from, what, Oklahoma and the Dakotas and all, all around the country. And I've gotta tell you, the, the feedback and the positive response was just overwhelming. Uh, they just loved it, so I'm not surprised they're coming back, and that was a, that was a great catch for us last time. This is a big catch again. So, uh, we, yeah, we proved ourselves, and, uh, you know, heck, if they wanna come in every year, we can probably work something out, right?
I think we, I think we can. Uh, uh, so I'm, I'm understanding that the decision was okay, but, uh-
Under consideration.
Under consideration. I'll, I'll, I'll sweat a little off on that one, all right? Uh, thanks a lot, I yield the counsel.
Ms. Durnus?
Um, I have no report this morning.
Wow, no litigation?
Commissioner's Report.
Well, Thursday, I attended my Community Corrections Board meeting. Mr. Cortez is now on the board, and he attended his first meeting. A lot of information is shared between the agencies that deal with corrections and treatment, as I'm sure you would agree, it was a, a good meeting.
It's a very good meeting, very productive, a lot of energy in the room.
Yeah, yeah. Um, Thursday evening, I attended an opiate forum that was held in Wellington. Uh, Chief Barfield and his department are doing a great job getting people with addiction the help they need, and word has gotten out in the community about how much compassion the department has and how well those struggling with addiction are treated when they come to, uh, the Wellington Police Department. Um, what happens is, let's get real, is contacted, and a peer support person is there and help them on their journey to re, their recovery. Um, there are nu- numerous people that told their story who are now sober and in recovery thanks to the program the Wellington Police Department offers, so great job out there in Wellington. Um, Friday, we had a meeting, Recovery One, which is Golden Acres as our treatment facility, and we're trying to identify the gaps we have and how Golden Acres can fill the needs of the community and also be a hub, uh, like a triage center with data collection, um, to help people and also take the burden off of our area hospitals and our jail. Um, that evening, I attended a steak fry at Tom's Country Place for Dennis Will. Great steak.
Yes.
Really good, nice, very good turnout. Uh, Saturday afternoon, I attended a fundraiser for Road to Hope, uh, which is one of our recovery houses in Lorain County. They've been providing service for our community for probably ten years now, and they do a really good job. Uh, yesterday, as everybody knows, was Election Day, so I wanna congratulate all those people who, uh, won their elections and those that didn't. I hopefully they'll support those who, that did, and thank you to all the people that came out to vote, and also those who supported our, our levies, uh, for mental health and DD that was on the ballot this, this time. Oh, and one more thing, and I'll give Hal a copy of this. Um, our collections center's gonna have new hours coming up. We're located at five four zero South Abbey Road, and our new hours, starting May twenty-first, are gonna be, there's, it's Monday, Wednesday, and Saturday. Monday from twelve to four, Wednesday from twelve to six, and Saturday from nine to three, so I will, um, have Hal post this up for those of you, uh, that watch this on TV. End of my report.
Let's make sure the press sees that too, for the new hours. We talked about yesterday, Policy Committee, speaking at Solid Waste, uh, we had our Solid Waste Policy Committee meeting yesterday, going over more portions of the plan. Actually, Keith was on the radio this morning on WEOL, talking about the plan and it moving forward, but also, good news. Lorain County got two EPA grant awards, one twenty-five thousand dollars for our Ag Tire, uh, collection event, which will be sometime in September, we're expecting, correct, Keith? And then we got two hundred thousand bucks for a new baler. Our collections center needs a new baler, something to handle the process, paper and cardboard, products, we'll get things done quicker, faster, less labor intensive, so.
Yeah, Keith's here, if you want him to-
I was gonna bring him up in a second.
Okay, sorry.
Let me say the good stuff, and he can say all the, you know, minutia. Yeah, go ahead, Keith, come on up.
So that's, what, tires for agricultural?
Correct.
Okay.
And, and, you know, that's, that's a tough, those, those things are hard to handle.
Yeah, they're big.
Can only make so many swings.
Huge.
Huge, really huge.
Go ahead, Keith.
Commissioners, we're getting inundated more and more with cardboard. I'm gonna be honest with you. We had a mountain, probably twenty feet tall, the, the clients from Murray Ridge were working on yesterday. It took all day to bail it, all right? Uh, we got a little old grocery store-style baler down there that we borrowed from over on the East Warehouse years ago, and put it in, in the, in that, down there and started baling cardboard and different things we could sell. And now we're being overrun with a shred truck, we need, we need to be able to bail our own shredded material. All these things need to happen, so we're looking at a dual ram, it'll have to go out for bid, you know, and, uh, new dual ram auto tie system, uh, that will service the county for years to come. It's a good investment, all right?
Thank you, Keith, appreciate it.
No problem.
Also, in regards to Solid Waste, had a little discussion, Republic sent out a new notice to everyone about what can and can't be recycled. No styrofoam, guys. So all those to-go containers we take home from events? We can't recycle those now, but they're not acceptable in the recycling stream, they end up being offshoot. But also, busy week. Congratulations, Mexican Mutual always does a great job with Cinco de Mayo, uh, their buffet last week, and then the parade on Saturday. It was a great turnout, beautiful day, people all along the parade route. Uh, what else did we have? We had, again, Dennis Will Steak Fry, always a sellout. Uh, Rich Cordray and Betty Sutton had a campaign stop at Black River Landing Saturday morning, as I talked about with everything ongoing on down there, and actually Betty Sutton went down to the Black River Cleanup-
Oh, cool.
-to see what was going on. They finally got the old car out of the river there.
She helped push it out, did she?
Huh? Yeah, she pushed it out. Yeah, cash for clunkers. Exactly.
Oh, that was good.
Also, again, Election Day, congratulations to all the winners and those who didn't, hope you continue to participate, but turnout's abysmal. In this day and age, everybody likes to complain about government and everything going wrong, and you get fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen percent. The nice thing about that is mean eighty-one percent of the people have no reason to complain anything about government if they're not participating.
We don't, but, but interestingly, you saw Lorain County once again rally around its support services for those-
Without a doubt, right.
The, the mental health levy and the DD levy, uh, passed overwhelmingly with strong support, which is unusual in a primary. Uh, they, they can pass a primary, but usually the, the victory is not that large, so, uh, Lorain County, contingent demonstrators compassion for those that, that need some assistance. A hand up, a hand out.
I stood out to poll six, seven hours and had one gentleman come out and complain about the levies. I will never, ever vote for a levy. I said, really, developmental disability and mental health issues?
Renewals.
Renewals, and actually, I, I think Charlita White Anderson was at the same point, but I think she said, the renewals, they don't cost you any more money. What? Okay, we don't wanna take care of those most in need, but it happens. But it was a beautiful day at the polls, wish we had better turnout participation. End of my report.
I just wanna remind, uh, everyone at home, um, that if you will please mark down on your calendar, June twenty-third, that's when we will unveil, have the official grand opening of the new courthouse, and also we have the Fire and Police Memorial over there.
It'll, uh, we'll start the event sometime after seven in the evening.
Seven, okay.
Uh, we'll have, we'll have tours of the facility, and then we will have the lighting, we'll have a dedication and a lighting of the courthouse.
Food?
We have food, uh, the group, the group is-
Why do I, I'm always the one that has three-
There's food.
You know what, if you're really hungry, go to the International Festival first and eat, and then come here.
Oh, man.
We're, we're, we're going to make it a bit of an event, we have a lot to do. We wanna rededicate the WW2 memorial, possibly, uh, the workers memorial, although they just did an event. Um, and of course, we're, we're going to unveil the, the, uh, Last Watch Monument, Police and Fire Memorial. Uh, so that's, that's gonna be quite a, quite an event in itself. We'll do the lighting of the courthouse, and then we'll do the lighting of the new memorial. Uh, it's, uh, I'm looking forward to it. We'll, after, after seven, probably run till about nine-thirty, quarter to ten, so we're, we're gonna have some food, we're gonna have some events, we're gonna have some show and tell vehicles for families to ring the bell, things like that. So we're trying to put that all together right now, uh, the team of your, your folks are, are working on that. We'll have more to follow, but it'll definitely be an evening event, and twenty-third is, is the date. Rain or shine, we're gonna have something. Let's hope for shine, because there's not a lot we can do in the rain.
Exactly, exactly. Yeah, and then also, the, the days are longer, so we, to be able to light the courthouse, it'll probably end up being somewhere around nine-fifteen, nine-thirty, probably by the time we get the-
We'll hope for nine-thirty.
Somewhere around there. But, uh, obviously, we're real excited about it, and, uh, being able to save the, the courthouse and find a, a functioning governmental use for it. Um, so it's, uh, and with the investment we've made, uh, it should be here for another fifty, uh, years.
A year longer than you and I.
Exactly, yeah, we'll, we'll all be long gone by then, so-
All right, one to hundred.
No, okay. But, um, so, mark that on your calendars, June twenty-third. Um, had a taping, Don Romancheck and myself went over to WEOL to talk about, uh, the lakefront connectivity plan, a lot of the cleanup initiatives that, that are taking place along the Black River, and also talked about Recovery One. Uh, congratulations, Mexican Mutual, on their event last Wednesday, wasn't able to attend, but, um, Joel Arandondo and the whole group over there. As I always say, it's one of the friendliest places in Lorain County, I just always love going to Mexican Mutual. Um, also, uh, we're continuing our ongoing meetings with the Puerto Rican Transition Team that's helping the families transition to Lorain County. We believe that as time goes on, probably more families who are already here then will be, uh, having loved ones, uh, come over, uh, and helping to assist them, and, um, and now that the weather's nicer, I'm sure that people maybe wanna make the transition here when the weather's nice, instead of going through the, the cold and lengthy winter that we had. So, um, that's, that's working out well. Uh, wanna congratulate the Alaria Education Foundation on, uh, their event the other day at, uh, Nick Abraham. Uh, they do an amazing job supporting our Alaria schools. Um, wanna commend, uh, nurses and corrections officers. It's, uh, National Nurses Week and also Corrections Officer Week, and couldn't think of, uh, wow, it doesn't get much tougher than being a nurse or being a corrections officer, but, uh, very demanding jobs and, uh, just very rewarding fields, uh, for those in it, but, uh, we, we commend them for the job that they do day in and day out. Uh, congratulations to all the candidates, and thank you to the community for, uh, supporting our mental health board, and also, um, Murray Ridge. That completes my report. Mr. President?
Respondents?
Will the reading be waived?
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Public comment?
Anyone wish to go address the board this morning? Come on up, Jeff.
Good morning, I'm Jeff Baxter, one sixty Burns Road, Alaria, Ohio. Yesterday, uh, was the elections, as you all know, and I, uh, for the second time, I worked all day as a public elections official. I was stationed at the, uh, Nazarene Community Church over on one thirteen Clemens Avenue. And, um, we did have a very low turnout, as you might expect, and, you know, the numbers say that, and that, um, about nineteen percent roughly of Amer- of Lorain County voters. And, um, it's interesting to note, um, I went back and looked at the numbers from just four years ago, twenty-fourteen, the same general election, and we had more, let me get this right, we had, uh, about forty-eight thousand people vote. So we had about six thousand more people vote four years ago than we did yesterday, but today, we actually have six thousand more voters in Lorain County. About two hundred and nine thousand. Back then, we had about two hundred and three thousand, okay? And, uh, as you know, you know, I was connected with the sales tax issue that, that happened over the last, uh, year and a half. And, um, one of the complaints I hear from people today is, why do I even wanna vote? Because my vote doesn't count. It gets overridden. So I believe the four commissioners has a burden to bear on why the vote turnout was a little bit lower, why people think their vote doesn't count. Thank you.
Anyone else? Motion to move an executive session is outlined by the county administrator.
I would second that motion.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
This has been a broadcast of the recent Lorain County Commissioners General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at the Administration Building, two twenty-six Middle Avenue, fourth floor downtown Alaria. These are public meetings, and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.loraincounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners page, and click on View Agenda for a printable copy of the agenda.